Good, Jim.
Alrighty, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order and ask you all to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Molly, if you could help me with roll call, please.
Sure thing. All the person, Henry?
Here.
Other person, Barron?
Here.
Other person, Baldi?
Here.
Other person, Dean?
Here.
Other person, Grimmer?
Yep.
Other person, Cassin?
Here.
Other person, Eiko?
Here.
Mayor Atwell?
Present.
Administrator Hafner?
Here.
Great. Moving on to item number four, approval of minutes of February 21st, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Alrighty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to City of Delafield citizens' comments. Come on up, Mary.
Come figure out what you are pointing out.
You might be the only one today.
Oh, my God. Good evening, everyone.
Make sure you turn it on.
Yeah, pull it towards you.
Green light. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel and I live at 309 Wisconsin Avenue here in Delafield. First of all, I'd like to thank Mary Green for sending me the work in progress on the statement of values for the municipal property insurance company coverage, which is due March 17th, and it was at Tom Hafner's request after the last common council. So thank you again. So this evening, I'd like to speak on the agenda way at the end, number 12, the report of city officials, specifically C, the treasures report, which is the very last page, 138. So, thank you to the administration staff for updating it because it got much shorter, to say the least, which is good. First of all, my questions are: Capital Project Summary, which is dated 1/31/22, the 2017 Bark River Stream Bank Restoration and St. John's Park Expansion is finally closed. It appears those projects were roughly $24,000 over budget, looking at the document from January 3 of 22. My question is, where did the funds come to pay for this overage? Going down a little bit, on 2019 street paving, Mission Road Path Plan Engineering, $10,000 has been sitting out there since 2019, and my question would be, why is this still on the Capital Project Summary? Little bit farther down, 2020, '06, Public Space Tree Planting Budget, $2,500 was spent, and it was actually, excuse me, 2,000, $2,400 was spent. So it's about $2,000 over, and where did, of course, where did the funds come to pay for this? 2020, the item 22, the Downtown Development Budget Plan, has $12,000, and it states that it's $11,800 something over budget. Where did these funds come from? The 2020-14 Nagarica Road Separated Path, which is the Oakwood Road to the bridge, it states that it's $65,000 plus over budget. Again, where did the funds come from? The 2021 budget, repay fish hatchery, budgeted at $82,500. Actual cost was $36,500. So where does the $46,000, which was not spent, get applied to? 2021 Downtown Development Plan Budget, $14,000 is back on again, and it's not spent. So above it, it says it's closed, so why is this still active when the project is finished, according to the 2020 entry? So I hope someone can answer these questions for me, and I want to thank you for what you're doing and being here. Kind of a farewell song for Mr. Barron. We've been doing this a long time, so I'm still staying. I hope you are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, are there any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. We'll move on to special order of business, accept the resignation, retirement of Jim Hamis as city attorney.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay. Alright, B, Resolution 2022-04, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Delafield, Wisconsin, extending the city's appreciation to city attorney Jim Hamis, 14 years of dedication of public service to the city of Delafield. And I gotta get to-
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. And I do quickly want to read this resolution here. Does it make it big enough I can read? A resolution of the common, oh, thank you. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Delafield, Wisconsin, extending the city's appreciation for city attorney Jim Hamis, 14 years of dedicated public service to the city of Delafield. Whereas Jim Hamis was first appointed as city attorney by Mayor Ed McAllier and confirmed by the city council on April 15, 2008, and whereas Jim Hamis has served as city attorney from 2008 to 2022, and provided 14 years of outstanding and dedicated public service to the city of Delafield during that time. And whereas the city council desires to make a public declaration of appreciation to Jim Hamis' contributions to the city. Now therefore be resolved that a vote of appreciation and thanks be extended to Jim Hamis for his outstanding and dedicated public service as city attorney. Thank you, Jim. Okay, now we're doing, present, did that, did see. So Jim, I would just like to thank you in addition to the resolution. I know you've been a great asset to me and the council while I've been here, and I've always heard exactly the same things from the other mayors and the other councils, so.
Good thinking.
You want to come up to the mic?
Practicing municipal 45 years, and I found that if you have competent and dedicated staff and competent, dedicated elected officials, my job was a lot easier. I've had that here, and I've been very fortunate. It's been a privilege. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, before we move on to item D, Catherine, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about the-
Just real quick with Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, I just wanted to add a few words that I've really appreciated working with you. I've learned a ton from you. In fact, with as much as I've learned from you, I think I've earned probably at least 5% of a law degree or something like that. But I also want to mention that Ed McAllier, who originally appointed you, he intended to be here tonight to say some words of appreciation and thank you, but he was feeling under the weather, so he asked me to extend his appreciation to you and well wishes for a happy and healthy retirement. And then lastly, on behalf of the entire city, we do have a small token of appreciation for you with a little gift and-
Giving you your name tag.
You get to take your name tag. Thank you for everything, Jim. Much appreciated.
Okay, now it's your turn, Catherine. Come on up and tell us a little bit about yourself and your firm, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, this chair is low. My name is Kathy Guttenkunst. I'm not related to the Packers' manager. He would be Guti-Kunst. I have an extra N in my name. I started practicing law on, I think, July 1, 1987. I was hired by my former partner to work for a guy named Jim Hamis, who I never met. I got there six weeks later. I tried my first jury trial, with Jim sitting in the back of the courtroom making faces at me. Started attending my first municipal meetings, I think shortly thereafter, and I've been doing municipal meetings on behalf of developers as well as municipalities for the last 30-some years. We don't need to count those, do we? It's been a long time. When I graduated from law school, I thought I wanted to be an SEC lawyer. Unfortunately, my dad died that year, and my plans changed. And I ended up at Kramer-Maltoff with Jim Hamis. I've learned a lot, as Tom points out. Jim's a great mentor. He's a great teacher. Couple of things I learned along the way was, you treat everyone the way you want to be treated, and that is regardless of the situation. And you always look for solutions. Don't always look for problems. And I heard the young lady, Mary, speak earlier, who I had the privilege of meeting at Hawks during the Willie G Davidson Art Show, which was really wonderful, talk about some budgetary issues. It sounds like your budget is critical, and that you guys are watching every dollar and every penny and every expense. So you need a legal lawyer, a lawyer that's going to do the same thing for you, not someone who's going to, like, look for issues, look for fights, spend a lot of money. You want someone that's going to come in, you're the policymakers, the lawyers are really the people that implement those policies, and get it done, and not spend a lot of time spinning their wheels. I've known Mr. Barron for many, many years. He's registered in, registered in probate, registered deeds, and my firm, I moved to Axley-Brennelson, June 1 of last year. I'd been at with Jim for 30-some years. It was the right move for me. The firm is bigger. We have more lawyers. We have more expertise. We have a whole segment of our firm that does insurance defense work. They may have actually represented the city along the way. I don't know that. And it's closer to my house, and we have a popcorn machine. So I've grown, born and raised in Lake Country. My kids went to Cushing, Calumay Middle School. I went to Zion, if that tells you anything. And I spent a lot of time eating in the city of Delafield, so it would be my honor and my privilege to work with all of you, if that is the honor of the council this evening.
Great.
Anything I missed?
Nope, I think you covered it all.
Okay, any? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, D, council confirmation of mayor appointment of Catherine Sawyer-Guttenkunst. Alex, did I say it right?
Close enough.
Really close.
Axel By Nelson, LLP, as city attorney.
I'll so move.
Second.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
I do have some concerns before we actually-
No discussion?
Yeah, we need to have a discussion.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it's not-
I was hoping somebody would speak up if they needed to.
Yep, thank you.
Can I just pause on the discussion? It was Grimmer who had the second?
Thank you.
Considering where the city's going to be, wind up going in the next few years, with all of our intergovernmental agency agreements, with all of negotiations with St. John's Military Academy, I feel it's really imperative. I had asked Tom for the list of candidates for the position for this, and while I'm sure they're all fine, qualified lawyers, I really have to stress, and I couldn't vote any other way than voting for someone who is actually a full-time municipal lawyer and litigator. There was another person on there that I thought really fit the bill well. That's all he did. That's all his firm did. Didn't represent anybody that wanted to sue cities, but only municipalities. Didn't do any other kind of law. That was a specialty, and I think that's the direction we really need to go. We need to make sure that we've got somebody with that kind of expertise. And I don't know what else to add, other than I just think we've got to have somebody who's really got that kind of background and those kind of resources. So that is my two cents worth.
I need to recuse myself on this one because a group of citizens, we have engaged this firm before, working with Mitch Olson. I don't think it'd be appropriate for me to vote. I will abstain.
I guess my only question is, how are, often decisions are made, like we are presented with some of the criteria of some of our concerns. So I guess I would echo Phil. I have no doubt that Catherine is a wonderful attorney and well-qualified. I also know that we have issues in this city and have all the years, I'm going into my 10th year on common council, where there have been legal issues that maybe we need more specific and expert advice from someone who's exclusively a municipal attorney. So that would be my only concern. It's like if I have a concern, let's say a heart condition, I'm not going to go see my general practitioner. I'm going to call a cardiologist. So that would be how I, just a little confused. And I don't know how we vetted things, and it's awkward when we come in as a council and we're expected just to confirm something we haven't ever talked about.
This is, I'm actually not sure how to do this. You were the person who held the interviews.
Yeah, Tom organized the interviews and he held the interviews.
Suppose Tom could be the only one to answer, but currently, according to our council rules, you're not supposed to speak. But I was hoping to get information about how the interviews went and what the criteria was, how you scored them, and how you compared them.
Well, the mayor could speak if he vacates the chair under the current city ordinance. Would you like that? Would you like me to speak?
That would be great, because that means then he can't speak, correct?
Well, they could vacate back and forth.
Well-
That had nothing to do with any of this.
Yep. I don't play a role. Yeah, it would just get to be a volleyball game. So, yes, if you could address that, Tom.
Yeah, so we did a more significant RFP process than what has ever been conducted in my time with the city for an appointed position. As an example, when Ed McAllier appointed Jim Hamis, Ed said, "I like that Hamis guy. I like what he did with that Geeson issue we were dealing with. He got straight to the point. I want him." Called up Hamis, said, "Will he be my city attorney?" And Hamis said yes, and the council appointed. So I think the level of professionalism of the process we conducted is substantial. We invited five different firms to submit proposals. Two of them chose not to. So we received three firm, three proposals from three firms, chose to interview all three of them, and I would say that most definitely, both Kent and I were in lockstep with who stood out as the, as the best fit for the city of Delafield for the choice. Kathy's got a long history of municipal experience. I'm kind of surprised that that's being questioned. I don't consider her a general practitioner with regards to municipal law. I consider her an expert with regards to municipal law, and that's my two cents.
Okay. Was there any other criteria that you, because the other candidates also had experience, and in fact, the third candidate had even more. So was there a way you gauge that, or a way you use a process of elimination?
What do you mean even more? Is with regards to years of experience, or?
The number of municipal governments that are currently being represented by him personally, and then other municipalities represented by others in his firm. It was close to a dozen, and I think that he's just had the background. And with all due respect, you know, Kathy has currently listed two. I understand that she's probably got some experience with Jim Hamis, but I think it's this side of the table for governments that we really need the experience, the litigation, because I think there's some practices we're currently doing that put us at risk for litigation. Perhaps even the current litigation that we're in could have been avoided if we had counsel.
Okay, well, I mean, I've given you my opinion. It's to the point where this really is a decision that the council needs to make, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so there wasn't any particular criteria as far as any, you know?
Well, we looked at experience. We looked at cost. To be honest, it was very, you know, any of the three firms could have adequately represented the city. It's my belief. But I think in the end, and really, it was the mayor's choice, so it probably would be best for him to vacate the chair to speak up. But in the end, I think it was just felt that Kathy would be the best fit. I think there was a comfort level that she would bring a lot of similarity with regards to how Jim represented the city. I think that was a factor. But that's my perspective.
Okay. Before the mayor vacates, if he does, I would just ask, you and Jackie brought up the fact that another candidate had greater municipal experience.
Exclusive, yes.
Exclusive. That's what I said, exclusive. Whereas in, on Catherine's own website, it says she specializes in collaborative family law and divorce, legal separation, custody place, a lot of other things, which are all important, but not for a city attorney. So that was my only question. And the process might have been great, but we didn't know it. So that's my que, I just wanted to-
No, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the point. I guess my concern, and I mentioned this at a previous council meeting, was I don't know that there is an advantage in hiring the same municipal attorney group that represents all of our partners.
Could be.
And could there be a conflict of interest? Could there be undue influence on that particular group? Because we do have conflicts-
Sure.
-with, with, with other of our, our other partners. And so I don't know that that's advantageous.
That's a good, that's a good point, Matt. That was, that was a consideration that Kent and I looked at, and if municipal law represented the city, we would become the fifth out of seven partners in Lake Country Fire and Rescue that they would represent.
And we've had, I mean, we share borders with some of these municipalities they represent, where there's issues. I mean, Village of Conewalk Lake is one of them, in my district at least. There's a problem with working with them on potential development that goes along Sawyer Road there, where they are adamantly opposed to granting access to people own property right up to their borderline there. So I'd hate to have to rely on an attorney, well, we'd end up hiring a different attorney to handle an issue that's been, that kind of is involved, has been, the city's been, it's been sitting on the sideline for about 15 years.
I did ask another attorney about that, and about having to recuse themselves if that conflict came up, and it's my understanding that that's when another partner from the firm could step in. So if there ever was that concern, so that's, you wouldn't have to hire anybody else.
No, they, they represented that. Fire and Rescue, you've got five municipalities represented by the same firm. I mean, you'd have to have-
You'd be looking at outside counsel in a situation like that.
So outside-
And granted, that's a small part of the city's total operation, but-
So the fact that the resume we're looking at, there's history with Town of Waukesha, Village of Wales, Town of Lisbon, City of Mayville, City of Delafield, Village of Heartland, Village of Merton, Town of Hartford. What are you looking for? In addition, you want a longer list than that? And then Johnson Creek and Brookfield. I'm just curious what, where we're lacking in this. And also, looking at some of the partners in her firm, I know Tim Fenner represented Delhart for a good decade plus. I mean, so he's intimately familiar with stuff underneath our city in the laws and associated with the Wisconsin Public Service Commission and other things that we get entangled with as a utility. So I'm a little, I'm, I feel like there's something else going on here, as opposed to-
No, I think-
I mean, I don't see a deficiency in this proposed appointment.
I don't think anyone must imply there was a deficiency.
I, does on-
No, there's no.
Okay.
Not at all. For me, I'm big into process, and all I had was a, an agenda with a, and here's the person we picked. So I didn't see any process in there whatsoever. So that's all I asked, is what was the process?
This came up months ago, when, and we talked about what the process-
The fact that Jim was retiring is.
Yeah, but we, it was in, I was in the meeting, and it was asked, what goes on now? Well, we're going to send out interviews, and I know you even asked for the resumes, and we were all copied in on them. We were a part of, I mean, we were advised of the process as it was occurring.
I didn't see any resumes.
You didn't get the-
It's alright.
You got the, you got the email from the, you asked for candidates, and we were copied by Tom on all of them.
It didn't include resumes. It was just names.
Yeah, so it included the names of the firms.
Right.
I don't know, I'm-
It's okay.
Okay, I, you can always ask for something better. I'm just curious where we get that from. I don't see, I don't see an advantage in dealing with a neighboring municipal attorney that's engaged with everybody else that we're also engaged with. You know, and I like, I mean, the history with the city and our neighbors is, she brings it to the table.
Alright, we're done with the discussion? Alright, we'll call the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
One abstention.
Passes. Alright, welcome aboard, Catherine.
I promise I was right.
No doubt. I have no doubt.
Oh, it's just a political stunt?
Pardon me?
It was just a political stunt?
Kent, no.
Okay, we'll move on to E, swearing in of the, signing the official oath of office as city attorney.
I have to interject, Kent. Part, point of order, Kent, that was actually quite out of line. That was very rude and very unprofessional. That was not a political stunt.
Okay.
I looked at the list that the other candidate had, and that the workshops and the classes the other person offered. Matt got me thinking about that with the whole intergovernmental agencies, and this other person was, that's all he did. I understand your concerns with having a neighboring community. That's something I hadn't thought about, but no, it was not a political stunt. I don't believe that's the proper way to conduct city business.
Alrighty, do the oath.
I'm gonna have that, yep. Do take that. That's for you. And I'll just go over here and hold it. Alright. I think, well, I think- That lovely city of Delafield in the background. That's okay. I, Catherine Sawyer-Guttenkunst.
I, Catherine Sawyer-Guttenkunst.
Having been appointed to the position of city attorney.
Having been appointed to the position of city attorney.
Swear.
Swear that-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. So happy to meet you. Welcome.
Thanks, me too.
Do you have any assignments right away?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Alright.
Thanks, Kathy. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Forward to working with you. Okay, 7A, proclamation for the City of Delafield Observation of Arbor Day. We need to vote on that? Oh, yeah. Okay, and B, adopt resolution- And B adopt resolution 202205, resolution disallowing the claim submitted by Peter Pankarski. Received November 24th, 2021. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, did you wanna?
Yes, I just wanted to remove the second item, just for clarification purposes.
Okay, we good to vote on the first item? All right.
So, hold on one second.
We should probably change the, the motion.
The motion.
Yeah.
I rescind my motion to confirm the consent agenda, but make a motion to approve item 7A.
Second.
All ready? We're gonna vote on a rescinding?
No, no, no.
We just rescinded it. Okay, so now we need a new motion.
It was just.
I already did.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes, okay, Phil, B.
Two points, two, two things I wanted to cover and just get clarified was it looks like the petition, the claim was not made within the 20, 120 days and it also didn't have an address. Is that the reason why it was considered? Basically to be not submitted properly?
Uh, the other, I think the other item as far as why it's not considered appropriate is that they are holding us accountable for something that the state statutes requiring us to do. And I think that the insurance attorney says they can't do that. So that's one of the several reasons that they've listed here. So all of the reasons are in here.
Which problem is the second point? We, we had voted initially with Steve to have the, the votes counted.
In central count?
In central count. And then we had wound up going back and have, and having them counted.
Yep.
And was that the concern of the? Their concern was that names would appear on the ballots. As long as, I guess my, ultimately. Their concern seemed legitimate in the respect that both the ballot and the poll list are public records and people's names are on that. And I recall Steve saying that was a concern. Ultimately, I guess, we're not.
Yeah, so the process is that when you count the ballots in central count, you put a number on the ballot and that number corresponds with the person's name in the poll book. Both of those items are public record and therefore if somebody wanted to do the math and track down the ballot, I, I think that this gentleman has a potentially, you know, it sounds like what he's saying is happening is happening. But we're not doing it anymore. The attorney still recommended that we proceed with the disallowance despite the fact that I, we have rescinded that as part of our election process. And it was, when I first started here, I, you know, had talked to Tom and said that that was something that was on my to-do list just because having worked elections here, central count is not something that I felt was useful in the way that they want it to go, which is that you have to do it for every election and, you know, despite the, the process, the actual process that just didn't fit here in my opinion. So I was already, it was already on its way out the door and this showed up and I talked to the attorney. The attorney said, yep, go ahead with, you know, rescinding that ordinance and then let it run out. And then a few weeks ago, they were like, oh, by the way, we want you to pass this resolution. So that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you. That was all I was looking for.
Okay, all right.
So I'll move 7B.
No, I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes, okay. 8A licenses, I believe none. B planning commission, Mr. Iker.
Yeah, it seems like a while ago, but we did have a meeting back in February where we, trying to think about it. There's a cafe that's opening up next to where Sally Sweet Shop was, it's coming, we approved that. And a couple of other businesses where licenses have changed and been updated. And looking forward, there's, we, we had a discussion about, well, Hawthorne Farms is having a second phase that will be coming our way soon. There's a public hearing because we're changing that from ag land into the type of development that they proposed when they put in the, the, the first phase, it's just north of St. Joan of Arc's church on the Shota Road. So that's coming up in our next meeting, I believe, is a public hearing for that, as well as some discussion on potentially looking at some rezoning of properties across the street from Cushing School to the cemetery. So that's something that the, we heard a lot of input from the citizens that own the homes along there and what options would be. So that's going to be up on our next, next agenda as well. So look for that if you're interested in weighing in on any of those, those properties. And then in front of us today, this is a follow-up, we did vote on the rezoning, I believe, in our last council meeting. And then we acted on it, taking it to the next step for the Joe's Legacy Farm property on Nagawicke Road on the east side of the lake. We've got two items in front of us here today for the conditional use for the general development plan as well as the preliminary plat. So this is the general plan that would coincide with the rezoning that we voted on. And then from here, they'll be obliged to translate that into all the specific implementation steps of the actual landscaping and some of the finer details that, that they'll be under some more scrutiny for as far as how, how it works in, before they finally build their homes there. So with that. I'll, I'll make a motion, we can have a discussion. So I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use of the planned unit development and the general, the conditional use general development plan for DELC 0781989004 and 005.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Passes.
I was Dean voting it?
Yes.
And then for the same two properties, again, this received approval from the planning commission on February 23rd. This is for the approval of the preliminary plat. So I'll make a motion to do that, to approve the preliminary plat as submitted for DELC 0781989004 and 005.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Passes.
That's it for, for items from the planning commission for us to act on tonight. Again, there, we're, we're going through some of the recommendations from the Economic Development Committee. And so I encourage anyone who's familiar with that plan, and if you're not, go online and, and look it up. But there's a particular area that you're interested in, keep your eye on the upcoming agendas and sign up for notify me to, to get a, a little bit of a heads up so you can prepare for those meetings and give yours, give us your feedback. That's all I have for planning commission.
Great, thank you. Okay, C Lake Welfare Committee, Phil.
Two things worth note, noting, one is the, that time for egg oiling. So if you know of any that's got nests anywhere near the, the lake, it only works if the eggs are actually oiled. So to try and help reduce the Canadian goose population. The second thing is the Nagawicke Sailing Club up in the Shota was considering internally in their organization, having a discussion about putting buoys out in the lake for the sake of tie-ups, so mooring buoys. So it did not, they, they brought it forward to us just to ask us what our opinion was on it. They did not even seem to all be in the same position and all in agreement. So it seems like there was internal disagreements, but nonetheless. Just to make our position known, we took a vote on it and definitely against putting mooring buoys out there. So that's.
I'm gonna look like a, I don't know, but I don't know what a mooring buoy is.
You asked for a pier for every single, well, let me phrase, when that was built, every, it was sold so that every lot would have a slip. That turned out not to be legal or appropriate. So consequently, they have very few slips for the number of lots in there. So this is a way to get more boats out there.
Buoy that you tie your boat to.
Out, out there and then you get out to your boat.
Got it.
Yeah.
I.
And the kettle's considered too.
I think some of that's regulated by the DNR, but they may defer to a local unit of government because there's some areas where you see them. I know they're regulated. Every once in a while, I know there's, there's been one sitting in the kettle on occasion off the, other condos. When they become a nuisance, they'll be regulated. Is that, is that in the eye of the beholder when it, I mean, I'm, I'm asking you lake folks, is that a, you know, are they unattractive? Or is it a quaint little sight to see all these little boats moored in the? The current use is a few people have them in front of their house where they might tie a boat once in a while. But it's not for, the current use, I've never really observed them being used for overnight storage of boats.
Only during a regatta.
Yeah, during a regatta, well, those are, they throw them in for the night. But the Yak Club has two out in front of the Yak Club that are used just to tie up boats to put sails up, but they're not stored there. I guess that's the concern you're gonna get into. Lake Geneva has them where they're stored, where people store their boats the whole season out there. So.
There's a couple dozen moorings out on Lake Nagawicke right now, but that's primarily what they're for, not overnight storage. They're for a visitor or for a sailboat and they, they use them for guests.
But there's no ordinance regulating them.
Yeah, there could not be any city ordinance.
I'm sure the DNR, I'm sure the DNR has something, I don't recall something being in the city code. It, it's one of those things where they're, they've been going on for as long as I can remember and I don't ever remember a complaint. They're always in the slow, no wake area, so.
Thank you. And that is it?
Great, thank you. Okay, D park and rec and tree board, Mr. Grimmer.
Uh, no tree board meeting, park and rec. Park and rec has, is trying to be a little bit proactive relative to the Economic Development Committee properties that were identified. And bringing those on to just start to spitball, so to speak, what concerns park and rec may or may not have with those various properties. Also, I'd like to mention that there is a volunteer committee, a volunteer organization called Plugging the Bark. Mary Daniel heads up that committee, that volunteer group whose main effort is the maintenance of the Bark River. And they will be out there in April and are always looking for volunteers.
Great.
Riverbanks, thank you. Not the river, no. All the plantings, they're not getting in the river, knock on wood, nobody's going in the river.
Intentional.
Intentional.
Okay, thank you. E Public Works Committee, Mr. Barrant.
Oh, we had a meeting and we passed a, a motion to approve the contract for Wolf paving. And, and so I, I want to have some discussion on it, so, but I will make a motion to approve the contract in amount of 610,404 for this year's paving, repaving projects.
I'll second.
Mary Daniel mentioned some projects that are over budget. I know this one was about 20,000 over and I can't recall how we were going to balance that. I know there's some savings on other projects, but.
So actually this one is. $4,404 over budget.
Okay.
And that's anticipating full engineering costs. And also the full number of bid quantities. Very often on our paving projects, our bid quantities, our actual bid quantities come in a little bit under the, the bid quantities. And sometimes the engineering also comes in underneath the, the budget. So the recommendation is to award at a projected $4,404 over budget. And we'll see how the quantities come in and see if that alone or savings in engineering can bring us within budget. And if not, then we can readdress with a, a budget amendment at a later date. We still do have the Mill Road project that is going to be budget, bid soon. The Villages Summit is, is bidding that for us and taking care of the administration. We're finalizing an intermunicipal agreement for the city to pay its share of that. But there's growing concerns with construction costs that maybe on that, once we get that project bid, we may be looking at a more significant overage, but I think for now, this, the council can be comfortable in awarding this contract. And then once we get the Mill Road bids and we get the construction done, then we can address from there.
So Tom, the project description as we have here, that was what we'd budgeted for the year for roads in general, was it not? $660,000? That was the total for the roads?
So the total budget. Was. I think it was 900, $900,000. And that includes the road, the city's portion of the road program that we're bidding out, the Nagawicke Road path, which we're bidding out as part of the road program, Evelyn Avenue path, which we're bidding out as part of the road program. And then you'll see here that we are deducting out from the available budget, the expected mill road costs, which is $212,000.
Okay.
So total for all those projects, we've got $900,000 budgeted.
Where's the Evelyn Avenue path?
Evelyn Avenue path is on the far west border of the city, directly off of Evelyn Avenue. And it's just a short connector to connect into a path in the Villages Summit.
Okay, all right. And then the, I know those two weren't down there, the, the East Devonshire Road connector and the Genesee Path aren't included in this one? Would that be, would those two be included later on?
Those two are in the 2022 budget for design only, scheduled for construction in 2023. So those dollars you see in this year's budget are just for design.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrant, we'll move on to F Delhart.
Yeah, we did just recently have a meeting there. For what it's worth, we, we, a little, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we had an employee that, that left and Scott decided not to replace him and see if we could get by with one man down. And it worked pretty well. Did, did take a, take a big, it did crimp people's style because it was a little harder to get vacation time and time off and stuff like that. But as it turns out, we're, we're looking at another employee that is going elsewhere and he's already hired someone for him and we're gonna hire that person back. So we're kinda, we're in between a plus minus one relationship and it's all on our budget to, to accommodate it. But, so that's, that's kind of interesting that we, we got away with a man down and figured out we can't really, it's not sustainable. And also the, the plant upgrade to get rid of the, to replace chemicals with, with more biological digestion of the solids is, is going on right now. And it's going well and, and is on track, so. So we should be in, in place or on time to meet our permit requirements for phosphorus in that for next year. And that's all I have for Delhart.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Police Commission.
Two things worth noting, one is we'll be getting in about a month, the annual report and the review of how they've done for the last year and all those fun statistics. And then they also requested to begin a hiring process to replace the lieutenant who will be retiring at some point this year. No date is yet determined, but they are going to be starting that process because that whole process takes six months, probably, actually closer to eight months by the time you can actually get the officer working individually on patrol. So they started that process and. That's where they're at. That is it.
Sounds good. Okay, each Library Board, Ms. Valdi.
All right, Library Board met, lots of information you can get online on the Library Minutes, which are posted. But also I'm going to encourage folks to look at the delphildlibrary.org, dot O R G website. There are just so many good things going on, I hate to pick highlights except for one. And that is a week from tomorrow, March 29th, between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. Mark your calendars, Culvers is donating 10% of their sales during that time to the Friends of the Delphill Library. And the folks at. And the folks at Culvers have always been wonderful. I've volunteered for one of these events. It's a lot of fun. But yeah, get yourself one of those great burgers, and you will be contributing to the Friends of the Dellafield Library. And otherwise, go to dellafieldlibrary.org and check us out. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I, Zoning Board of Appeals, assume no meeting. Promotion and tourism, Mr. Barron.
Well, they had a meeting and they were, they were going to congratulate me on not being there, and I wasn't there. Something like that. Sorry. I was actually at a conference in Madison for my other, my other work, so. But anyway, there's nothing special on the agenda, that's all I have in front of me, so I can't report much. They've approved things that they're in the program, and they approved to pay the bills. That's all I know.
There was one thing that was very special on it that I'll be reporting on later.
Okay.
You can do that.
I will.
All right, we'll move on to K, the County Fire and Rescue Commission. No meeting, no report that I'm aware of. L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
We had a meeting last week. Revenues for the first couple months of 2022 are coming in as expected, no big surprises. There is, there was a separate work group created to just start to look at staffing vis-à-vis the referendum that Western Lakes is doing, what our staffing looks like relative to my previous report at last common council meeting on the decrease in paid-on call and full-time staffing at Lake Country Fire and Rescue. Otherwise, everything looks, looks good.
All right, thank you. Okay, last one, M, any other cities commissions, dear management? Ms. Henry.
Sorry, I have not a great voice today, but we met last week on the 15th and went over just kind of the final numbers. We haven't met since January, so we went over the final numbers of the season. Wasn't what we would hoped for. I don't have minutes yet, so I believe it was between like 11 and 13 final deer that we harvested, the numbers that we had. So we're hoping, part of that is that we only had two stands active for the whole season. We had to take out of commission four of our stands that were within, too close to the school zones. So we're now working, so one of our big things that we're going to work on before the next season is getting permission from the schools to either keep those sites open, to open those sites back up for next year. We can do that with their permission, with the school board permission, or finding other locations that we can move those stands to. So that's going to be our main priority over the summer, to get that going. And then also looking at the city codes relating to bow hunting in the city and just some of those regulations to see if we can, if it would be appropriate, it makes adjustments to those that might allow us to put stands in appropriate locations in the city. So we're going to review those, the city ordinances, and see if there's some suggestions we can make that might allow for additional stands within the city.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, nine, unfinished business, we have none. Mayor's report number 10. I just want to thank Jim Barron's for all of his service for the city council. He's had many roles. He's been very helpful on various committees at different times. He's been mayor, he's been alderperson, and he has a very good replacement coming in. But Jim, I want to thank you, and you've been thanked many times, for all the service that you've given to the city, in this case as alderperson.
Well, I'm happy, happy to have served. It's been 10 years. The one thing I will say that I don't mind the turnover, I think if you look at local units of government around, in our area, I think the City of Dellafield has really benefited by, and my time on the council, almost everyone here is new, 10 years. And the other thing is I, I do want to compliment us on, on how we work together, even though we have minority opinions. And I mean that in a very respectful sense, that we actually talk about things, and I think you got to keep that up. So the lone wolf that raises their hand once in a while, they still bring value. And it almost, you could use it tonight, that instead of a unanimous vote with nothing said, no one knows why we voted all in the same manner. So I like to have clear decisions, but there's nothing wrong with the person saying, you know, I just don't agree with it. But then I always say, say why. Just put in the record why you don't agree. I think it makes, makes for better discussion and better decisions, so.
I'm going to miss this guy sitting next to me. He gives the best history lessons of anybody I know, just like, oh yeah, well, back in 87. I'm like, I need to start writing this down, but you know, just a measured voice. And I remember back before I was on common council, coming before the council, it was often Jim's measured, you have a wonderful calm cadence in your, you know, voice and, but you often give very thoughtful insights, and so I will miss you.
Thank you. I'll be around.
Okay.
All righty, well, thank you again, Jim. Okay, we'll move on to 11, new business, a discussion and possible action regarding changing the fee structure for fish hatchery, public weekend rentals due to termination of City of Dellafield contract with Clean Line.
So I presented a memo in the packet. Essentially, Clean Line has been serving the city as a kind of check-in, checkout service for the fish hatchery. That service is kind of above and beyond, I think, what we would expect from another cleaning service. And based on, we did have a walkthrough this past Friday, and based on some of the comments that I had, we'll be lucky if we can get cleaning on the weekends period, let alone somebody who comes in. So the current process, Clean Line representative meets the renter, they walk through, they do a check-through, and then they come later to check for damage. The renter does not get a key, so we need to make some changes, and part of those changes are to the fee schedule. And part of that is, we currently have a tiered fee schedule. We want to remove that tiered fee schedule, we want to just have a one-per-day rental. We reviewed, the fish hatchery is very unique, it is a beautiful building, the location in Dellafield is kind of coveted, so it's really hard to find something completely comparable, but there's the Schutzy Building and certain buildings down on the Fox River in Waukesha. And then I did find a kind of wedding-specific venue up in Washington County Park that is comparable. And that one in, you know, Washington County, which is kind of a hike from the metro Milwaukee area, they charge $700 a day, and their weekend rentals are quite expensive. So what we are proposing is, again, to eliminate that tiered fee structure, to just break it down to a flat day rate, and we'd like to charge, we're currently charging $575 for six hours or more. We'd like to charge $600 a day. Part of the increase there is that we do expect to see an increase in cleaning fees for the fish hatchery, and we will have to have it cleaned, even if it's not on that Saturday or Sunday morning following the rental. We're going to have to have somebody in there to clean it on Monday and make sure it's clean because we have Heartland Rec there all week also. We'll have to have somebody there on Friday to clean it before the weekend rentals, and we do expect to see those prices increase. We also have proposed an increase to the security deposit. You know, having Mike there was a benefit because he could go through, check, make sure there was damage, make sure it was, or it wasn't damaged, make sure it wasn't clean, and then we had, you know, a person there. We don't have that now, so the current deposit is $175. We'd like to increase that to $350. We just really want to make sure that people are not damaging the facility. Some other items that we have to take care of, there was also an agreement with Mike to come in weekly and set up tables for the art class. We are not going to have a cleaning person that's going to do that two times a week, and he charged us $75 a pop to do that. And I've been kind of back and forth with the Heartland Rec department there. Course members are generally of an older demographic, those tables are a little cumbersome. So currently, our plan is to require that the renter set up the tables in the manner that they found them, which is going to be in the manner that the art class would have. And then we're, if they don't, there'll be a fee for that, that they'll lose part of their security deposit. And it's really, we don't want them to lose their security deposit, we just want people to like clean up after themselves and not damage the building and to do their part. I have seen, we're going to provide a schematic for them to put the tables back. It's not the first time that I've seen that done at other community centers. A lot of times, you can do whatever you want with the community center, but you have to put the tables back the way you found them. And that's not any different than what we're asking folks to do. So, you know, the other thing is that we, we're trying to, we're offering, we would like to offer a weekend rate of $1,300 a weekend, so that's Saturday, Sunday, and then you get basically the entirety of Friday for an extra hundred bucks. And that's because we have a lot of weekend rentals for weddings, and they want to have that. They, they do like the three hours the night before, then they do all day on Saturday, and then they'll do three hours in the morning of. And this will be similar in price, maybe a little bit more, but it'll be easier for us to do. We won't be trying to remind them, you know, because we had to make sure that they came in in the evening, and it had to be this time. And this is just really going to ease the process, and I think that ultimately it's going to be better for what we have now. I think the prices are fair for what we offer, and I would highly recommend that, that we move forward with this. Did anybody have any questions about the process?
Well, I just wanted to say that I think it's fair, especially like the increased deposit, because I think it gets people's attention. You know, if you keep it low, I mean, the security deposit is just that. If you clean it up, you get it back, you know? But it just, I think people need to take it seriously, so I think it's fair. I really do. I've held more than one event there, and it's been wonderful, but you, you know, I like that. You're making sure people treat it respectfully.
And this decreases the amount of time that staff have to spend?
We are very hopeful that it will decrease the amount of time that staff has to spend. You know, there's a lot of, because of that tiered structure, there's a lot of people that'll call and change their times 14 different times because they, you know, they think that they can fit it in, and they can't, and then they're shifting, and all that takes some additional time. We're tracking down deposits, and we are very hopeful that this will eliminate a lot of that staff time.
And I hope so. And my other concern is Wisconsinites are traditionally very cheap, frugal, frugal. Is this going to, you know, the zero to three hours, the three to six, I know, is, and it's hard to judge from COVID, but is there any estimate of what percentage each one of these categories took, or over the summer, it's all weddings? I mean, are we losing business? Not that the budget hinges on the revenue from the fish hatchery.
And I have that concern a little bit. Right now, about 50% of the reservations that we have in are that six-plus hour reservation. In discussions with Cassie, she handles the majority of the fish hatchery rentals, it sounds like we have a lot of requests for weekends, but they're already taken. So I think that if we have, I don't think we'll lose it, I think we'll see a shift. I think, I think we might see a shift into that, you know, the whole weekend thing, because it's very easy for them to utilize that, and it's a reasonable rate. But if it does become an issue, or we see that it's not getting filled, then we may have to address it. But I do think, you know, again, having looked at comparable facilities, I feel as if our rates are very reasonable.
And if it doesn't work, we can always make a reconsideration next year.
And that's the comment, the comment I would make is that, let's just say after this summer, maybe we, the staff revisits it and just says, okay, we experienced this, maybe we need to tweak it here or there to make it better for next season.
Yep, we absolutely expect to have some hiccups here. It is a pretty big shift in how we're doing business, but, you know, we've thought long and hard, we had a meeting with, I, Dellafield 1.0, this was what I did, and, you know, I've talked with Cassie, and we talked with Tom, and we feel that this is kind of the best action going forward, and we will, of course, revisit it if there are hiccups, and we expect to have a couple, so.
Yeah, I'd suggest for, for the people that do come in and say, well, this, we used to be able to do X for this amount of money, maybe just keep a, keep a little notepad of feedback from people, like, well, you know, this is not what we're doing now, what would you think if we had to add something different to accommodate that? What would, what would you think would be reasonable? And just kind of keep a tally so we can understand those that might be alienated by it, what, what they're willing to stick out and see if it's reasonable or not.
Not to belabor it too much, but it sounded like roughly 40% are, if I remember correctly, under six hours. Is that like a birthday party for an hour or two? Is that the kind of person that we're going to have a tougher time with?
Yeah, so those are going to be like the three to six afternoon birthday parties, the baby showers, the bridal showers. They generally opt in for that three to six for the $350. So I.
So under the current scenario, they would have to find another venue?
No, they'd just have to get it for the whole day at $600 bucks.
Oh, okay.
So I honestly don't expect it to be too much of a problem. The folks that want to go there, I think will go there, and they'll.
And maybe it'll fill in with other things.
What is it, $250 extra dollars? I'm trying to do the math in my head. So 250 extra dollars, and then they have, they don't have to worry about getting out of there in, in that timeframe, and, you know, making sure that they're gone before the next person comes in, because they have all day, they can be more relaxed. I've had it for that three to six hour timeframe, and let me tell you, it was super stressful, like getting in, getting out, so. And we, a lot of times have folks that think they can do the three to six, and then.
Can't.
Can't, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppo.
We didn't have a formal motion, did we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional fee request increases for fish hatchery, as highlighted on the page 107 of our, of our packet.
I'll second that.
All righty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes, thank you. Okay, 11B, discussion and possible action regarding municipal code section 2-198 involving the city council conduct of deliberations and the presiding officer speaking.
I think. Yeah, just to introduce, there is a memo in the packet, and this issue came up recently where we discovered that we weren't following a section of our code that says that, that the presiding officer of the common council meetings is required to vacate the chair. And an interpretation by City Attorney Hamis is that this only applies to the mayor making a motion or participating in discussion after a motion has been made. And so I brought this to the council's attention, asked if anybody wanted to discuss this further to see if we wanted to, to clarify or change or possibly eliminate this section of the code. And I did receive requests from three different aldermen to include it on the agenda for discussion and possible action.
I can go first from a discussion standpoint, and that is, the rule makes sense to me, and it's something that I know from my tenure here that hasn't been followed really closely historically through the four mayors I've dealt with. They all kind of stepped on this in their own little way, but not intentionally looking to violate a ordinance, it's to, usually it's to share thoughts, expedite points, share history, relay, things like that. But being aware of it and having this be the, be the, kind of the warning shot, like, hey, listen, this is a rule, we should follow it, there's a way for the, for the presiding officer in any committee, because this would apply to any, any of them, to make their general sentiment or back. or background history, or frame the discussion however they want, because they're the presiding officer. When they bring up the item on the agenda, they can put the input and lead with it, and then leave it for the discussion after a motion's been made. That's, I think, how it should work.
It doesn't, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's...
To clarify, it doesn't prohibit them from offering their opinion?
Not according to what I read, as far as how Hamis is relaying the interpretation. It's, in my opinion, the way this, what this is saying is, yeah, preface the point however you want as the presiding officer. Once a motion's been made, you're not to engage in the debate on that motion. And I think that's for a reason, as a presiding officer, whether it's the mayor or in whatever committee, you're using influence that no one else has as the chair, and that's not how the discussion's supposed to take. So, I mean, I understand why it exists in Robert's rules, and I think it makes sense for our rule. And if there's something that's really pressing, like there almost was earlier, he can just say, I'm going to relinquish the chair to weigh in, and it's nothing awkward. It adds a little time, that's all it really does. But it formally sets the stage for, I'm no longer managing the debate, I am participating in the discussion. And then, so, it's a formality, but it makes sense to me. I haven't seen it abused much, but maybe, I don't know. But anyways, I think it makes sense to leave it alone.
And to go back to the practice of...
Just not having, yeah, like in this venue, not having the mayor engaged in our volleying around of our debate on a motion that's on the floor. I mean, because that's not the presiding officer's role. It's, when it's thrown, when we decide that we're going to debate this point, and there's a motion being made, we stopped hearing from the audience, we stopped hearing from, you know, we can go solicit it. But, you know, I think that's how it's supposed to run.
No, and I appreciate that, and I'll play devil's advocate, that, is it an extra, is it, is it, I mean, from my perspective, I really want more voices. I want to hear all opinions, and I don't want anyone to feel constrained in any way of offering their opinion. And is it just, is it too much of a machination to go through to vacate the chair, speak, and then do you take back the chair?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's kind of a formality, it's an awkward formality.
Well, there it is. That's what I think it would become, an awkward formality. And I don't, and to your point, I don't know that any mayor or any president would ever abuse the chair if it were vacated or passed, et cetera.
Yeah, if we didn't have this rule, I don't think much would operate any differently. I mean, I think I was, looking back, I was only kind of intimidated by the mayor's influence for the first two meetings 12 years ago. I learned to get over it. So I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of leverage that where anyone's like, oh, no, you know, Kemp doesn't want me to say this, you know, whatever, you know? So I'm good either way. But I understand that it's in our code. I don't know that we should go through the effort to eliminate a section of our code.
Yeah, if I can speak. I feel like when he's, at least in my experience of seeing that, that I don't have, the input that we've gotten from the mayor has been a lot of informative stuff, where we're asking questions. And I have never felt like I've been interrupted necessarily when I'm, when we're debating. So in that case, if it isn't a problem, and the input has been helpful for the council, I would rather not do that by requiring a formality. Like, if it's ever a problem, we could always add that back in, in my opinion. I feel I'd rather leave it open, that we can have that open discussion without...
Well, that's an interesting point, that the discussion and the debate of whatever motion is being discussed changes. And obviously, the mayor, whoever he or she may be, might not have addressed that in their opening statement. In which case, yes, they could go through the formality of vacating the chair, and yada, yada.
Well, it takes 30 seconds. I don't see it as a big deal at all. And I have gone back and watched a couple of times where, and I'll bring up St. John's Pier because it's a thorn in my paw, but that's where not only was the motion up, and it was up for debate, but the mayor broke the tie after expressing an opinion. And it just should have vacated the chair so it was an open point of having an opinion. I don't disagree with you at all. I just think that it makes us mindful of the process. The process is there for a reason, and we should just follow it. It's not a big deal, and it won't take like 10 minutes to vacate the chair, just say, whatever the process you have to do, make the statement, and then you take your, state your position, and then go back. But there are roles that we have, and I agree with Tim. When we start debate, it should be amongst the seven of us, and not, it's not the mayor's role. They don't get a vote, they're supposed to be impartial. They're supposed to be running the show. If they have information that's important for us, maybe it should come out before the motions are made.
I'll agree with you, and I'll disagree with you. All at the same time.
What?
Yes, it's happening. I agree, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
But the mayor does get a vote, if there's a tie.
Right. But should they be expressing opinions and running a meeting? How are we being impartial? Where's the impartiality there? That's part of the role of the mayor, at least from what I've read. And I'm no expert, but my understanding is the mayor's role is to, you know, as Jim pointed out, the minority voices. And since I'm often one of them, I'm a little sensitive.
Also, what's interesting from my perspective is I never really realized this was a thing. Other than when I was on the county board, the chair never spoke unless he stood up and said, I vacate the chair, and he went and sat down in his other chair.
Did he really move chairs?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cute.
And then the guy, the council president, or it's the vice chair, he would walk up, sit in the chair, so that we always had that shift. And then as soon as he was done talking, he says, now I take the chair back, and he'd go back and take it.
And was there a bet?
Let's put the chair way over there.
And I guess at the county board level, it's more formal, and I'm thinking about our level than versus our committees. Sometimes we're kind of reliant on the chairs at the committee level to run things. So it, as you get to the smaller, smaller groups, it's more informal. But the county board does really adhere to this stuff, and I never really realized it, that that chair, he never says a thing from the chair. I also understand, if you read the book somewhere, is that as soon as someone utters something, that's a motion, even if you're against it.
Yes, as soon as you talk, that is meaning that somebody wants to talk about it. You don't need a second as soon as somebody else talks.
And sometimes you'll see, and our mayor used to do that at the committee level, where he was always giving a motion. And so once in a while, I'll look at the agenda and I'll make the motion just to get things going, because in my mind, you should have a motion before we have...
And we all know we're supposed to do that.
And at the county board...
I mean, we're not doing it now.
At the county board, again, they don't, see, I can say this now, because Mr. McDougal is not here. He hated the county board, so he'd always say, don't bring that up.
I could go either way, I just don't know if it's practical.
Again, they would never introduce anything without a motion. So someone's assigned the motion, I'm sure that's the way it works in Congress or at the legislature. So, I don't know.
Well, maybe it's good, maybe we try it out.
I think, so you'll have a new county council, if you want to change things, do it after.
Yeah, that's right.
But maybe everyone should be aware of this rule, so whoever is the chair here is aware of this rule, and maybe raises his hand and said, I want to say something.
And I would have to ask, because it is a formality, how effective it would be. The rule is there, because if it's not there, when you do need it, it's too late. If you don't have the rule and you need it, and we've already, if it's taken away, it's not present, and you're probably not going to get it back in, you know, for quite some time. I would just ask, you know, if the whole idea is to prevent the mayor from dominating a meeting, is this enough practical? Because the mayor, it's not that difficult to step down. So I don't think, I don't think it's very effectual, so...
Can I?
Which, I don't know what Robert's rules could have instead, but...
I don't know, they've been around since 1876, and they've run things fairly well, so I think there's a reason we have them.
I would just leave it as is, I guess, but...
Don't, if it's not broke, don't fix it, just be mindful. We didn't know. It's not a big deal, because it doesn't happen very often, so leave it be. I'm very conservative about this.
I'm happy to give it a try. I mean, it's a change in practice. It's...
Could I ask that we put this to our next meeting, to that we wait to make a decision on this till our next meeting, given that we're going to have a different dynamic, and I think, I mean, potentially have a different dynamic?
I only suggest it because a board can make their rules.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That way, the, I mean...
I just have a question. I mean, is it anticipated that the chairs of the other committees would, based on the clerks that are at those meetings taking minutes, that they would try to do this as well? I think that's...
This rule is in our municipal code, specific to common council meetings?
Oh, to common council, okay, that's good. That's good. Because I think that'd be a lot more difficult.
Probably.
I think they're basically saying we're deferring change at this point to the future.
Like I said before, I could go either way, it doesn't really matter to me, and I'm just not sure what the benefit of it is exactly.
You have a rule.
But I'd like to...
And if you don't follow the rule, you'll open yourself to litigation.
Okay.
Somebody could come back and say, you didn't follow your rule, so I've got evidence, reason to sue. I'm just, so all I'm pointing is, either you have the rule and we follow it, or we take the rule out.
Yeah, that's where I kind of came from too, Wayne. I mean, the fact that it's in our code, and it's not just a matter of the flexibility that's built into Robert's rules based on the size of organization you are. I mean, because, you know, I mean, I know, I think you teach the class. We're not following to a T what Robert's rule says as far as our meetings go, other than the fact that we are because of the size of body we are, and you get a little bit less formal when you're the size that we are. But the fact that it's in our code, that's different than having some flexibility with how we adhere to Robert's rules. It's in our code. You can't break, you should not be breaking our code. So if, we don't want to just allow flexibility, we either have to kill it from the code, change it in the code, or follow it. So I'm 100% behind you.
That is absolutely true.
Yeah. At this point, I'm all on board with saying, let's bring it up in the middle of April and see if anyone cares then.
And I'm not in favor of keeping it in the code and not following it.
Correct.
I agree with that.
I would say either vaca, either get rid of it, or, yeah, let's start to follow it, and we can always revisit it if it becomes obnoxious.
Yeah, there is an election, we'll have at least one new person next month, so let's let them, let's let them weigh in, and we'll see where it goes. That's what I think.
Yeah, I agree with that.
All I would ask is if it stays the same, that you all help me, I wouldn't be used to that rule, to, if I speak out of turn, remind me, hey, you got to vacate the chair. And I gladly will.
I disagree with Mr. Hamis's thought that it only applies to after the motion is made. If you read Robert's Rules of Order, the presiding officer is responsible for overall fairness, and the way it is written is the presiding officer needs to be impartial, but on certain occasions, which should be where the presiding officer may believe that a critical factor relating to a question has been overlooked, and it's his obligation as a member to call attention to it. So what Tim said, there are times when the mayor can weigh in, but he just needs to vacate the chair to maintain proper order and fairness.
So I think Jim's interpretation is our code specifically says, whenever the presiding officer shall desire to speak upon any question, and Jim's interpretation is that a question implies a motion.
I agree, but that's what's in interpretation, but I'd like to see our new attorney's interpretation of it.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? Any motions?
No motion necessary for do nothing.
No, but I would like, I would like to request it to be on...
There was a request to put it on the next agenda.
To put it on the next agenda.
Why don't you just bring that up at the end of this agenda for items for future agendas?
Yes.
And then when that comes back, then we can also bring back the interpretation from the new attorney.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, we'll move on to 11C, discussion and possible action to authorize city administrator to approve a new cleaning service contract based on the evaluation of proposals to be received by March 22nd.
Yeah, we are anticipating proposals tomorrow. There is an urgency to signing a contract. We don't meet again as a common council till, I believe it's April 21st, I think. And we are anticipating that costs will likely be higher than budgeted, so there likely will need to be some kind of budget amendment performed. But due to the urgency, I'm asking for the council to approve me entering into a contract that's in the best interest of the city.
I'll sort of move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, E, approval of voucher payable report.
D.
Oops, I missed one?
D.
D, discussion and possible action as requested by alderperson Grayson regarding city procedure for notification of public hearings.
Thank you. Little background, I'd ask to put this on the agenda because whether it's Lake Welfare or here, including the common council meeting we had just a month ago, it appears to me that people many times are not, and people in the community have not gotten information that is important to them because it relates directly to where they live. Reaching out to a few municipalities, made a few phone calls, and just found out how they do some things. I just happened to witness something as well, driving through Conomawak, that gave me some ideas. And what I wanted to just do, I can share these with you. Part of the issue comes up with land use amendments need to be notified according to state statute. And Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. But then zoning changes would be notifying people per city statute, and that's where some confusion comes in, because there's two different statutes that are being followed there. So that's one thing I'd like to try and address, not answer tonight, but address, is just, is there a way to follow one, maybe just the state code on both of them, or something, so that it's a uniform process? But in taking a look at what we do have in our city code for at least the rezoning, we've got in the newspaper that it has to be in there once a week, or two consecutive weeks, with the last time appearing at least a week prior to the hearing. I'm not suggesting any change to that. It also says that mail, notice of public hearing must be mailed at least 10 days prior, and I would, I'm not saying these are solutions or answers, but just wanted to throw these out there for discussions. Maybe there's even something better. But to at the very least say, it's 10 days, 10 business days prior. Realize that sometimes things are difficult, but doing our best to try and get that out, because one of the comments I heard from people at the, I believe it was the Plan Commission, was they had gotten the notices on a Friday, our offices were closed, and I believe the notices were received later on, and they should have been, so consequently they didn't have a chance to talk with anybody at City Hall. Maybe, if possible, scheduling notifications to go out as soon as the hearing date can be scheduled, as soon as it's established, instead of waiting just 10 days prior. As far as the mail, I'd also add the second thing there, that alderpersons would be included in the mailings, just as a point of information for us, as well as we're being informed that these are going out and in a timely fashion. There's not that many public hearings regarding this, so wouldn't be any great cost there. The distance currently listed in the code says it's within 300 feet of the land that's in petition, and I would suggest that maybe 500 feet is better. That's what we were experiencing with some of the people regarding the farm development that's going at the Geeson Farm. I believe some of those people were farther than 300 feet away. It was a whole neighborhood. As far as the Board of Appeals, I think this is probably, this is so rarely applied, that it's actually slightly different condition. It's only within properties within 100 feet. I'd suggest no change. But unless I'm misreading something, it says, failure of such notice shall not invalidate the action of the bodies taken above. Unless I'm misreading something, Tom? If the people don't get the notices, it really is inconsequential? Is that... That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. I would, I would move to strike the word "not." I believe there's a reason for informing people. They should be notified, and if for some reason notifications aren't made, the meeting should be postponed.
Reason that's done, I'm sorry, I shouldn't interrupt. I'll comment at the end.
Thanks. There's also a few new things that I'd add at the bottom for conversation. I don't think, and you can come and tell this one two times, I don't think it's on the notify me on the push notifications. If it was, I didn't see where to sign up for it. And when I was driving through Conomawak about two months ago, because of all of the changes that are going on at the Old Olympia, they actually literally had a sandwich board that said there will be a public hearing on this, on changes at this site, and then they gave a week, a date about two weeks out. And I would propose that we consider doing something like that at the arterial intersection, or maybe at the site itself, or maybe secondarily also at City Hall, but just to try and make sure that the people in the neighborhood know. I don't know, additional mailings would be very beneficial. And then that would be placed by the direction of administrator 10 days prior. And the last one is a big one. This would be really a big change in how we do things. And my understanding, other municipalities actually do this. Matt actually had given an informational meeting to people in his district regarding St. John's. It was just informational, but people were asking questions and thinking, you know, out loud and conversations. Well, I don't think that would be a good idea. These conversations and those points came up. And I was informed that anybody in the council who's going to vote on these things, or anybody that's on the Plan Commission cannot, they must be unbiased in advance and only talk about it at the meeting and express their opinions then. So developers, I'm told, are actually doing this in other places, that they must have at least one, I'm suggesting two, just so it's different times, meetings with the residents. I was told Seapman does that. I'm not familiar with that fact. Spears, I was told, did that, but after the fact, after all of the residents showed up here. But that they would have a chance to have a, it's not a public hearing. The developer is providing the information, seeking ideas how to make the plans better. It's actually a public meeting for only those individuals who would be involved personally. A public hearing comes later on. This is just for those who are stakeholders. Meetings would be informational, just to get feedback from the parties at stake. Mailing addresses would be provided to the developer by us. City Hall would be made, this room would be made available at no charge as a meeting place, unless they decide to use some other local church or something. But that the meetings would not be run, the city officials, and that city officials would be, if in attendance, would abstain from commenting on the proposal and just remain as just, by standards, just to monitor how things are going, just so they're in the know on how things went. I think that's probably the best way to get development in the city is by having as many voices as Matt said, at the table as possible. I voted initially against the change at the Geeson Farm because of this reason. People, I don't think were properly notified. I think it's probably a good idea. I think it'll turn out really, really well. But I think that process is really important. Bringing people here could have alleviated the anger that we felt in this room. So, there's a whole lot of ideas. I don't really, just things for people to think about that could be discussed at the next meeting. But, Tom, you did have a few things you said you could clarify or add?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, I want to make clear that the city, the city code really just reiterates state statutes in a lot of these things. So if we're gonna have a city code that incorporates some of this, just to be, just to understand that we would become more stringent within what state statutes requires. If we do go away, say, from a 10-day notice and go to a 10-day, 10-business-day notice, it will delay all public hearings by a month. And then some developments require multiple public hearings. So it will have a significant impact as far as our ability to efficiently get projects through the process. And then there was some confusion with the Spears notifications. And it came out that that notification that people were saying that they received one day before the hearing, that didn't come from the city. That was a notification from the developer himself. And that was for the public hearing where notification wasn't required from the city. State statutes for land use plan says that. So just to let the council know, and I haven't made you aware of this, but when it came to our attention that there was a resident that thought we were violating our code by not sending out a notice of public hearing, and then us identifying that the code he was referring to only applies to Chapter 52, our zoning code, the process for land use changes or land use conditional, or public hearings is not in our code at all. It's exclusively in state statutes. But with that being said, you know, I talked with staff as soon as it became a concern, and we identified that yes, notification wasn't required, so we could still go on with the public hearing. But immediately, I talked with staff and we put into place a staff-level policy that from this point going forward, we will be doing the notifications for land use public hearings, consistent with what the requirements are for zoning changes. So that was put into effect immediately. And as we go through these additional areas, that'll come up from focus group recommendations, any land use change public hearings will receive the same notice that the zoning changes do.
So are you gonna change the code?
Wasn't planning on it.
I mean, you're just saying you're doing it.
Wasn't planning on it, but I'd be supportive if the council wants to put that into the code.
The thing is, the public relies on that. And you move on and we have a new administrator and, you know, I think it's a good idea. But then I think it probably should be part of the procedures. We talk about all the other things, putting them in...
Yeah, it's interesting, because you look at good code writing, and should you repeat things that are state statutes and put them into code, which is basically what we've done with the public hearing process for zoning changes and whatnot. And the problem you run into is then, you know, the state or locally, they change and they become inconsistent. Sometimes brings on unanticipated consequences and whatnot. But right now, state statutes does not require notification for land use, so it would be appropriate that if the city wanted to do that, to incorporate it into our code, because that is, that would be a deliberate deviation from what state statutes requires.
Tom, are you implying that a deviation from state statutes vis-à-vis 10 business days instead of 10 calendar days could be problematic in terms of lawsuits or conflict or something like that?
It would just be a, it would slow down the process.
You said it would slow down the process by a month. I'm very irritated by people that show up and say, "Hey, I had no notice, and this is all too soon." And I get that that. I believe them. But I also, I get that they're frustrated and it's all happening so fast and everybody just slowed down. And so I get that sentiment. But how does it, and so I'm, I want to be agreeable to some of these things that Philip brought up. But how are we delaying by a month by changing 10 business days from 10 calendar days?
Because the Plan Commission schedules the public hearing. And then we typically are able to get that public hearing in to the paper as required and send the notices out in time to have the public hearing at the next Plan Commission meeting?
So if the notices were sent out at the time of the scheduled public hearing, why wouldn't that be, give more time to, for residents to, and not delay?
Like before, it's scheduled. We wouldn't send out notice.
It's scheduled and then you send it out within five days of it being scheduled.
I don't think that would hit the...
I'll offer a suggestion, only because in the real estate business, there are business days and then there are regular days, and there's all this counting that goes on. And then you have a holiday in between. So then it goes into the third week. If we, if the 10 days, and given the way mail works today, the 10 days may be tight. So maybe, I'd pick them. 10 business days is at least two weeks with two weekends. You're really, you're into a third week or whatever. So I would, I'd say 14 days or 15 days, something that people can look at the calendar and count the days. I wouldn't call them business days.
I truly believe that we have not had a problem with the 10-day notification. Once we worked through the issue on this, and the original complainant, he did acknowledge that he did receive the notification for the zoning change in plenty of time, but it was simply the land use change that he said he did not receive at all. And then some of his neighbors said that they received one day before. And then we identified that what they actually received was a letter from the developer explaining that the development.
My opinion is, and we're jumping around a little bit, but zoning, land use, PUD, those are all the same things, because they're like permanent changes. Probably treat them all the same, whether it's 10 days or 14 days, or, you know. I mean, a variance, I mean, it just goes to those neighbors, but it's a big deal to a neighbor. There aren't many of them anymore, but I think it should be simple.
Well, I know we struggle. Well, we don't struggle. I mean, there's, I always wish there was, there was more engagement in the community. We've got two people sitting out in the audience, one of which is the next alderman from the fifth, second district. And probably nobody watching.
Well, there's some people watching. There's dedicated watchers. Don't say there's nobody watching.
There are some people. But it's just frustrating to me that people maybe aren't as active as they could be until it's affecting them. But I understand people have their busy lives and this stuff isn't always, doesn't always affect them. But I just wish there was, and a lot of it is the representative representing that district. That person has responsibilities to get out. And I know, I know you mentioned the informational meetings that I'm putting out, you know, and three people show up, but...
I was gonna do those incidentally. And I was advised not to.
But I've been, you know, and I, you know, saying that the development happening in my district is a really big deal to the people that know about it.
Definitely.
And, and, yeah, and I've been obviously doing what I think is my responsibility of getting out there. I know they've probably been calling you, and I apologize for that and bother you a little bit more than maybe they should, but they're passionate about it. I just, I just want, I share your concerns. I just, and I'm struggling to find a better solution.
I hate to say it, I have an idea. So, one of them, one of them, I think tinkering with the, it may be worth looking at the 10-day thing to see if it would be 14 days and still not kick it out a month. Because I do see situations where, I mean, it could be, it would happen a lot. It would really, I mean, we would be delaying things that should not be delayed. And it's, because not every public hearing is about, you know, a place where your grandfather planted a tree, you know, 80 years ago. But not to make light of that, but, so I don't think we should do anything in the code to create problems for ourselves or to create more delays in certain things. But one thing that I'm thinking of is when we do set the agenda for, like Plan Commission, that's where most of these things are kicked off, we do know that an applicant is gonna be requesting a public hearing. And we do know what property they're talking about, and we do know who those neighbors are. Now, we don't always give them the public hearing. Sometimes their proposal changes, sometimes they withdraw it. But I'm thinking it might be reasonable to do an informal mailing to the affected residents that would otherwise be included in a public hearing, and maybe just have a generic postcard saying, "There's action to be taken at an upcoming Plan Commission meeting that may impact your property. Encourage you to go look at their city website to find details or contact your elder person."
I like that.
And just simply have that as like a shot across the bow, and that would be six weeks plus in front of those public hearings. I mean, I don't know how cumbersome that would be, because, but it would show that something's coming up on an agenda that affects you. And that's just very generic, and it would not be something hand-tailored to proposals and the public hearing number and all that other stuff.
It wouldn't have to be necessarily something that staff has to create. Each time, it's just a form letter.
Have it be an alarming color, like a chartreuse postcard that just says, "This is something you might want to look at," even though you're gonna be next to the lawn, yeah, the lawn guys and whoever else.
Would that be in addition to the public hearing notice?
Then, then after that, then we're just following the code as it's written to say, you've got the 10 days to get it out there. But you, people would be getting the, people would be getting the notice that something's brewing, and one of the neighbors is gonna look into it. Not everyone's gonna get the postcard. I mean, they'll get it, but they won't do anything about it.
I don't want to be, I don't want to get the characterization, again, or whether it is true or not, that we're difficult to work with either. So don't get me wrong, and I know Bill's not coming from that point either.
But, Tim, I'm trying to process this. So...
Yeah, me too.
We get applications 15 days before the Plan Commission meeting.
Yeah.
And we don't have a full-time planner. She oftentimes won't look at an application for days, if not a week later, after they come in. At that point, sometimes she identifies missing components to the application and asks for additional information. And oftentimes, it's right down to the wire until she fully understands it and is writing her summary and recommendation to the Plan Commission.
So Mike and...
Are those ever withdrawn, though? I mean, how often?
So I'm not trying to...
Sometimes she convinces people they're not ready to be on the agenda.
In which case...
But we would have already sent a notice.
Right.
And people would be looking, and then there's nothing to see. I'm just saying it is a risk, right?
No, it would be, it'd be a false flag, often.
And how often does that happen, though?
30%.
It could not happen for a year, and then it could happen twice in a row.
And there, a question I'd add for you, Tim, is how big of a project receives this notification?
That was gonna be a question for Phil. What's a development, right? I mean, if it's anything that kicks off a public hearing...
Well, that could be the discretion of the alderman, older person representing that district. I don't know.
It's great conversation, because there's always possibilities for improving the process. So, you know, I, Phil had a nice list there, a couple of other good suggestions. I mean, I don't know, I just don't know how we boil it down to something that's gonna work and be helpful. You know, I need everybody's thoughts on that part of it, right? Staff needs that, or do we, I just don't want to turn it over to staff, because that's not really right either.
Right, and I don't want to burden staff any more than they are overworked already.
Do we have a, do we have the technical capabilities to be able to send out email blasts specifically to specific...
Don't have the email address.
I don't have the emails unless people...
But I know, but if we were, but if we're talking about spending a significant, I mean, I mean, this, to be able to send out these notifications every time we have a public hearing, that would, it's gonna increase our costs. If we spend, make an effort to really get, to get people to sign up for, for, to get emails.
I'm trying.
So, no, but I know, but if we're talking about that, if we, if we made a specific effort to collect emails for this purpose, like you will only be notified from us if it affects you. And we really make an effort to collect those. If we have the technical capabilities to do that, where we then send those notices when it affects you, I think that would be more effective than necessarily sending out these...
The typical person, I don't think you'll get them to give you their email address, because they have no involvement with the city until all of a sudden a development's in their backyard.
But then, again, I mean, how can we engage people if they're not willing to engage with us?
Well, I think, I like the idea of, I think, Matt, you sort of, you know, sort of put that, let the older person whose district it is in, like, I'm more than happy to go, because often it's just a handful of properties and just personally knock on the door, leave a little thing, you know, with my card saying, you know, "Contact me or here, there's something coming out." Where I, the onus is on me. I have a, I think Phil has one, you know, like if folks want to sign up, they do. But that's a volunteer thing. And I often get replies when I just send, "Hey, there's a public hearing," or, you know, "Leaf whatever," you know, "Brush pickup," or whatever, you know, the thing is going on wherever. Folks do respond, just appreciating the attempt at notice. But I think if we, as older persons, say, "When there's a proposal," and there've been a lot in District 3, "That I talk to folks," you know, and it... And it does put a little work on, on each older person. But, um, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it might be a place to start because it's simpler. It's the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid, you know? And just, and like, okay, it's that block down there, a block down.
Well, and then, and Jackie, it could be as simple as taking Tim's suggestion and putting it in a, not a mailbox, but a, a paper box or on the door if they don't answer. If you don't have a ton of time, hey, this is Jackie.
Right, call me, there's something, you know, right over, but just like a little notice. You know, like realtors have those little things they hang on doorknobs you get and just have, you know, like just a little thing, um, on their door. You can't put them in the mailbox, you're right. And not everybody has a newspaper holder, but it'd just be a way to kind of keep it simple without going into code, you know? And just at least try that. Because I do agree, it's been very frustrating and I know people have been frustrated. "Well, we didn't know." And we're like, "We don't even know how to let you know more than we already do." You know, so.
I agree with that.
We have to be in something, so.
Is there a tab in the notify me or public hearings? Somebody could actually, I mean, I, public hearings aren't a separate thing, so.
Our clerk probably knows it best, but it's by committee, mostly by committee. If, if, like you get the agenda, you know, and anything associated with that committee, is that, how does that work exactly?
Public hearing is going to be part of the agenda, so it's not a separate item.
Right, right, you get notifications of the agendas, but you don't get notification what's in them.
So we have different sections. One is the agenda, like more committee-related notifications. There is a section, the city news section, the news flash, where if folks have signed up for that, they get information that we've posted about, like the ice rink or taxes. When taxes were due, that's where I put that notification. But, um, the number of people that, you know, are signed up for that is not significant, unfortunately. And I would be happy, I would, I don't want to say I can for sure do this, but I would be happy to see, look into creating, you know, a public hearing slash development notification spot.
That's brilliant.
That if you folks wanted to kind of let your constituents know that that's available. So I can look into that in the very near future. I don't want to make any promises for tomorrow. I'm super overwhelmed with elections right now, so. But to get that, that going, to kind of ease that process too.
Do you have one of those that covers all the notices that you would pin outside the room here on the board?
I have a special page that I have devoted to public notices now.
Yeah.
They used to be kind of buried on the Plan Commission page. And I have created like a tab at the top in government. It's public notices. I include all of the notices for common council, public hearings, for Plan Commission public hearings, and anything that I would have pinned outside the door. But those unfortunately don't have a, um, like the news flash type of thing linked to it. But I could look into how to do that.
I like it.
Like a public notice.
That would be the right place to do it. I'm looking at it right now. That would be the right place. If there was a way to do the notify me linked to a new posting on public hearings and public notices, so you don't have to commit to it, but if, that's something you could do. That would, that would take care of this in our job. That would take care of most of your concerns here, Phil.
Your chartreuse card could even tell people to.
No, I know, well, let's forget the card. But, um, but that would, so it would be, in today's age, it would be our job and the city communicator's job to tell people, "Sign up for this notify me if you do nothing else. This is going to give you a flash to your phone or your email saying that there's been a public hearing and public notice posting. It may or may not impact you," right? I mean, it's not, if you own property, that's a big investment. Pay attention to that one email, once a month. I don't know.
Do you have a rough guess at how many people we have total that have signed up from notify me?
There's seven councilmen.
Is it, is it 200, 2,000, somewhere in between? I mean.
Like four, 500?
I had heard 400 and somebody said that.
Does that include people multiple times if they're on multiple lists?
No, that's, yes, yes. So it adds up the total number and it is, so if somebody has signed up for every list.
It's 200, isn't it?
So that would mean it's about 100 people.
I don't want to ask anybody to speak out of turn, but we did just send this information to a resident. Let me see if I can pull up the email.
I bet that's only 100 people.
I mean, I, I believe it's three consecutive communicators, maybe four, where I've asked people to sign up for notify me and the benefits of it.
It's in every communicator.
I don't know what else. It's in the marriage letter as well as other places, right?
Look, but, you know, I, I, I said.
I forgot, I don't have, this is not my laptop. This is the shared laptop upstairs, so I don't have my email. I apologize. But I, I'm going to try to log in, we'll move on. So it's, it's, it's under 500 and that 500 is a total of all of the subscribers for each individual committee. So that does.
Somebody could be signed up for 10 committees.
For 10 committees, the, I'm Schneider for 10 committees. But, you know, we all have signed up for all of our committees upstairs and, yeah.
All the committee members are signed up, so it's really, it's really notify me that, oh crap, I've got a meeting coming up.
The actual numbers are 165 for city news. This is the one that you'd center. 106 for common council, 104 for plan, and 3883 for commissions. I'm not sure what that is, but, so no more than 83 for commissions. So, but 165 for news and 106 for this.
Well, the one thing I will say, that people that do sign up for those, if they see something, they probably quickly share it with others, right? If they're paying attention. So maybe those are the best ones, right? Hope, would hope. Okay, are we?
I would just like to say thank you for entertaining the time and looking at that because I think that's one of the things that we really need to do most of is make sure to serve those that we're here for. And that was probably the biggest thing I started to experience even 18, 20 months ago, was people just being concerned about not getting information. So where, where did we end up in total on what we're doing?
It sounds like the hard action item is for Molly to look up to see if she can make the public hearings and public notices show up on notify me that nobody's using.
Right, notify me for public hearings, which I think is brilliant.
I also think you should think about codifying your process. If you're really informing people.
For land use.
On land use and on those other.
Or all developments.
If that's what you're doing and it works well, then we should say, "This is the procedure we follow."
See another YU Ds. We're going to miss you, Jim.
For PUDs, land use and zoning changes.
PUDs and zoning changes are already in there, just got to add land use.
Any others?
Did we, we're not going with the notifications to council members from the planner?
No, I think we decided the smarter thing is the.
She's got a full load and starts getting through everything every month as, as it is, so.
We could do it all.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Good discussion. E, approval of vouchers payable report, reporting dates 2/21/2022 to 3/18/2022 in the amount of $293,086.86 for accounts payable and $158,338.36 for payroll.
I moved to approve the voucherless payment.
I'll second it.
Okay, Dean, motion, Baron's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Reports to city administrator. A1, Public Works Bucket Truck Sale Update.
Yeah, a few things, a few positive things. We did sell the bucket truck and we had budgeted to receive $25,000 from that in the budget. And we actually received $46,500. We did get a, um, a kind of a bidding war going on between two municipalities. And actually, one of the municipalities got up to the limit that their council had set for them and they couldn't go any further that they wanted to, so. But, uh, yeah, that's good news.
Do we use online Wisconsin auction services for that?
I'm not sure the exact auction service that we use. I can find that out here.
Do we pay a fee then for that, for the auction?
The buyer pays the fee. So we, we clear this amount.
We cleared that amount. All right, thanks.
Um, the second item, I told Jim that there was some, um, uh, significant thing that came out of the tourism, um, uh, meeting and you're not familiar with this?
I know, they have, they have enough money now so they could do good things.
Yeah, if you recall, due to COVID back in 2020, tourism had budgeted to contribute $104,000 to the city of Delafield. They had contributed about $11,000 early in the year before COVID became an issue. But when COVID hit, they decided that they were unable to make the remainder of that contribution. However, uh, recent, um, results from hotel taxes have been very good. And they're to the point where they, um, uh, did fulfill that, um, the remainder of that, uh, budgeted amount and that they recently approved a contribution to the city of about $93,000. So, um, that will come in very helpful with our budget as we move forward.
Thank you, promotion and tourism.
Absolutely. Number three, uh, we met with our auditors this past week and they've got preliminary results from our audit. I don't want to share a number yet publicly because there could still be some adjusting journal entries. But I will say that, um, it does appear that we will end up very much in the black and it was a very good year for the city with regards to where we ended up budget-wise. But you should see a final audit come before you, hopefully in May or June at the latest.
A very good year.
Yes. Well, we met with the auditor. I just wanted to mention that, um, uh, one thing that I talked to them about is, for a long time, the Public Service Commission has allowed the city to charge what's called a tax equivalent to a water utility. It was basically done as a means to put private utilities and public utilities on, on the same ground with respect to rates. But I asked the question, you know, is there anything that says that we can or can't do the same thing with sewer utility and charge a sewer utility, basically a payment in lieu of taxes that they would pay into the general fund? Reason I brought this up is because our sewer utility is very cash-rich. And, um, uh, our auditor said that there is one community that they're aware of in Wisconsin that's already doing something similar. And he's going to look into the issue further for us and see if there's any reason why we couldn't do that. So I think that's a promising, um, uh, new idea of what we might be able to use to, um, help with our budget issue. And then the last thing is Alderman Kason asked me to include the update regarding the capital project summary in the packet. I've done that. It is typical for us that we only amend that once every year. Typically do that kind of in the February to April timeframe as we're preparing for the upcoming borrowing for our capital projects. So as Mary stated during citizens' comments, we were able to close a number of projects. Mary asked a number of questions about, um, budgets and how we, um, relate to, compared to actual costs. A lot of those projects were, some of those were five years old. I know we've gone through that process before as far as, um, identifying how the budget and actual compare. I know a lot of times in the past when we approve projects, it's identified that, hey, this project is $20,000 over budget, but we've got excess funds from the Southern project that came in $35,000 under budget. So typically that's, um, the justification for the cost differential. Obviously with capital projects, we're not going to hit costs right on. Some projects come in under and some projects come in over. And, um, our primary concern is that we are coming out even when looking at all the projects in totality. Any questions on that?
I'll make a comment. Again, Waukesha County, there's some capital projects that are 15 years old. And so it isn't unusual to have them hang around. And why is that? Some of them often involve federal funds and entities that are spending money years in delay and county's just waiting to pay the bill. You know, I think it's good to tighten these things up and finish them when they're done. There are other entities where it does take longer. The other, the, the other thing is if you're going to offset, I know Waukesha County actually has a formal resolution where they do approve, the board does approve moving those monies around, I think, once a year. So I, you know, it's, it's not done just at the administrative level. They come in with some kind of resolution saying, "Here's all our logic of where we're moving our money." So if people are, you know, concerned about some of that, then. But it's routinely approved.
Right.
You've done that once or twice recently. I mean, you've said, "This is over, this is under." And we can cover this, it's like a.
So, I mean, I, I think Jim's got a fair point that to be more, uh, formal, that we could do kind of a, uh, year in totality adjustment.
And I, and I don't want to overstate it because I don't think it's a budget amendment.
But I mean, how far do you take it, Jim? Because some, some communities do that for every line item in their operating budget.
I know, yeah. So it's, it's all over the place. And, and if you vote no, what, what's the impact? I don't know. Usually it's always already done.
Invariably, you know, all over our budget, we've got, you know, $1,000 line items that some, some of them come in at $1,050 and some come in at $850 and.
I do know that you cannot exceed your total approved capital budget year over year.
Correct, correct.
Without formal, you know, like two-thirds.
It's not an issue we've had.
Right, that's, that's always been our focus. Okay. That's all I have.
Great. Good, good topics, good information. Thank you. Okay, 12B, city clerk.
So we have the April 5th election, just around the corner here tomorrow. In-person absentee begins. So if you know anybody who would prefer not to vote on election day in the clerk's office, we will have that through next week, Friday at 5:00 PM. The rest of the days, it will be our normal time ending at 4:30, so 8 to 4:30. You can still request an absentee ballot by mail. That is at the, you know, constrained by the, the post office and how quickly they get things out. We finished heritage voting. Today we went there to wrap up our second visit there. So, uh, we're, we're looking at having training next week for poll workers. And, um, we're, we're just chugging along. It's keeping me very, very busy.
Sounds good. Looking forward to a good election. Okay, C, Treasurer's Report. I'll refer you to the packet. D, Council Request for Future Agenda Items. I know you're up.
I'd like to include the, to the discussion on Section 2-198 and possible action.
Okay, any other items? Okay, we'll move on, uh, to correspondence. I'll refer to that in the packet. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 9:06 PM. Thank you for everyone that's on TV and a couple of audience members.